Now we have a board. One more trustee on the way, but we're going to get started and we'll do that by welcoming everyone to the June 7th, 2017 regular meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education. This is one of our most jam-packed agendas of the year, but it is also one of our most enjoyable meetings inasmuch as it gives us an opportunity to recognize the many members of the community who volunteer their services to make this such a special place and also recognize our extraordinarily talented young musicians. But before we do any of that, our first agenda item is, as always, the pledge of allegiance. So if you'll all join me.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the recognitions, let me do two things that I've been looking forward to. The first is to welcome Courtney McCarthy, our newest volunteer. Courtney has sworn her oath and filed it with the district clerk, so she is officially a board member now. And let me welcome back Diana Swinburne for what is now going to be her fourth, I think. Fourth? Fourth. Thank you both very much, and I know we all look forward to working with you. So with that, Laura, would you lead us through the discussion of the recognition of our volunteers and tell us who we're recognizing and what board.
Yes, so one of my favorite times of the year. Good evening, Garrison, and welcome to our June board meeting. This is a very special meeting because it's when we intentionally set aside time to formally and publicly thank our many volunteers with words of recognition, gratitude, and a small gift for all of the huge things that they do for this little district. Our volunteers are creative, they're collaborative, and come with expertise, experience, and know-how things that enhance the learning experience for our students and are directly related to our district priorities, which is literacy, social-emotional learning, and technology. So we just want to recognize you, thank you, applaud you, and make sure that you can come back next year and help us out. So I'm just going to read names out, and my lovely assistant will assist me, John Griffiths. I'm going to be in your way, and I'm going to read everybody's names out, but if you're here, please kind of up and get a base, and it says "We love our volunteers." There's a rose, or maybe two. And thank you. Oh, I can sit here. So first we have our PTA, and Nell Timmer is our president, Shala Janetta is vice president, Jennifer is our vice president of programming, and Erin is our secretary. And Erin said she'd be here, maybe later. And some of the programs, our after-school programs, Hot Lunch, a thank you to the many parent volunteers for serving and cooking, our Here and Now Speaker Series, our Fall Festival, our Sweet Treats, which we enjoy very much, Ice Cream Social, the Book Fair, Science Week, and our movie nights. And that's just a little bit of the things that they do for us. So thank you, PTA. Then we have GSEP. Our officers are Lisa, who's the president, Kioko, who's our vice president of grants, Jean Clemente, who's our treasurer, Julia Nguyen, secretary, and Stacy, who does the fundraising. Hey, Stacy! And Kioko. Thank you. Our board of trustees and the GSEP is Deion, Sandy, and Sarah. And some of the things that they've been doing this year for us is our Maker Space, Hudson Valley Sea, Garrison Art Center, Modern Band and Percussion, Challenger Space Center Mission to Mars, New York Hall of Science, New York City Historical Immigration Experience, Soccer Goals and Balls, and 5th Grade Newspaper, and so much more. So thank you, GSEP. We really appreciate it. Garden cleanups. We've had two of them, one in the school garden and one in the native garden. The school garden one was run by our own Nicole Porta from the Hudson Valley Sea, and helpers were Eric, Joanie, Karen, Courtney, Tricia, Jean, Beth Rosenbart. I see everybody loves coming up and being recognized. Native Garden, we had our Tricia Mulligan and our 7th graders, so thank you so much. It was a hot day, but they pulled leaves and made it look lovely out there for performances and just to enjoy nature. And Chip Marks and Kimberly Schuffler helped with the invasive, so we're going to give them a shout-out, because they really helped us out. Garrison School Garden Club, those are the folks that you see outside digging in the ground and planting beautiful flowers and making our school environment not only sweet-smelling but beautiful to the eye, eye-pleasing. I don't believe any of them are here today, but Catherine and April. Catherine, thank you for representing. We have Catherine, April. Martha, Courtney, Susan, Barbara, and Jean. And a special thank you to the Phillips Town Garden Club for our Princeton Elm, which is outside in the back, 14 feet tall. Then we just had to give a slide to Mary Foviano. Mary really loves to be publically represented. She's our in-house chef for senior breakfast, Revolutionary War, and Colonial War. Thank you so much, Mary Foviano. And a special thank you, shout-out to Earl Gunderson. He's a community member who shouts out the good news of our school community and makes sure that seniors come to our senior citizen breakfast and the veterans ceremony is attended by our veterans. So we just want to give him a shout-out. I don't know if he's here, but we appreciate his help. Science Week, a full week of science. We foster curiosity, problem-solving, and the love of science. We had Shala, who is the coordinator. She represented the PTA and had PTA help in these endeavors. We had Judges Perry, Seamus, Pete, Tricia, Lucille, and Chip. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your expertise and feedback to our students. Those who are womaning and manning the science tables was Nicole, Pam, and Jason. Pam's from our local library, and Nicole is from the Hudson Valley Sea. Is Pam here?
Yeah.
And then we had lots of parent helpers, so I just called them the all-around volunteers. They helped where and when needed. We had Cecile, Sarah, Paige, Alejandra, and Ralph, Courtney, and Sarah. So thank you very much for your time.
And Laura, same thing for the GSEP that came in, so you guys have to be a little more.
And David Gelber's here.
You already told me.
It's the annual week-long event that celebrates and fosters the love of reading. And we have Courtney McCarthy, our board member and coordinator of that week, Kioko Gelber, who helped immensely in that week, and the PTA, of course. So thank you all. During that week, we had a book fair, a guest offer, Sarah Penney-Packer, who's the author of Pacts, and Drop Everything and Read with a parent or guardian. Building committees, crucial to the work that we do here in our school. On the education committee was Courtney McCarthy and Cecil. Safety and Wellness, Lee and Kathy Beth. I saw Kathy Beth, I think. Yes. Environmental, we have Annie Osborne, Pete, MJ Martin. I see MJ in the front here. Hillary. She's a two-year-old. Jill. Ed. Christine. Julia Nguyen said she might be here. Tricia. Jenny Evans, for her work now. And Jennifer. And then we have Arts and Education. Is everything all right over there? Arts and Education, we have Yisun and Rebecca. That logo is up there, that's from Susical, and those are the costumes that they created. And we have our Eagle Scout, Colin Waldron, who received his, he became an Eagle Scout because of this project that he proposed to us. He's a former student here at Garrison, and he created, he developed, wrote a proposal, right, around an outdoor stage in the native garden. So not only are we able to use it just to enjoy the environment and science, but we've also had an outdoor performance space out there. So we're using it as a multi-use place and an amphitheater. So thank you, Colin. He couldn't join us, but he was very excited that we were going to call his name out in public. And last, our Board of Education. We want to say thank you very much. You guide, you support, and we thank you for your work. We know this is not a paid position. And we know you work long hours and you're just like everybody else and make hard decisions, and we appreciate your time and support at all times. So Ray Awark, our board president, David Gelber, James Hope, Courtney McCarthy, welcome aboard, Jill Lake, and Diana Swinburne.
It's going to be very pretty, because it's going to look like a week instead of a month.
Thank you, thank you. Lovely. It was a great year, and we look forward to seeing you over the summer and into the next few school years. I also want to just give one shout-out to MJ Martin. I have this written down, I didn't say it, but I wanted to congratulate you for being a recipient of the Malcolm Gordon Grant that we used to develop the Hudson Highlands Land Trust River of Works Environmental Education Curriculum Development Pilot Project, which you will be working in partnership with us. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Laura, I think you still have the floor, because we have additional recognition.
Oh, well, I think I'm going to bring up Ulysses now, our new addition to the Garrison family.
All right.
You're welcome. I do the microphone there, or you can, wherever you feel comfortable.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
So tonight, I was asked to continue a really beautiful tradition here in Garrison, to honor and recognize our student musicians who have gone above and beyond to work and, you know, continue to perfect their craft, seeking private lessons, seeking either here or through their private teachers. I just want to thank, of course, the board and my administrators here for bringing me on board here. I feel so at home here. My administration, my colleagues, you know, just thank you, just quick shout-out to you all. Thank you for your, you know, words of advice, your support, your mentoring. My mentor, thank you. Also to my predecessor, Karen. Thank you for all your input. And, of course, all my student musicians here. I really count on, especially on my middle schoolers, I've counted on you to kind of give me the scoop on how things went, the culture within the school, the traditions, you know, how things went throughout the year. And every day, you know, as much as I come to all my administrators and colleagues, I go to the students as well, say, "Hey, what do you think of X, Y, and Z?" And they'll tell me how things went, and we'll collaborate, and I think it's a really beautiful thing, how that works here. I'm here to honor the all-county students and our NISMA Solo Festival students. So throughout the winter, we had an all-county festival, an invitation event for all the student musicians in the county to collaborate and create a concert for the chorus, band, and orchestra. And I wanted to honor those students as well as our NISMA Festival, our soloists, who I've discussed already, they worked on a solo, and either vocal or instrumental. So I'll call, I'll call it by grade. So you hear your name, please come up and receive your award. First up, in 6th grade, Mateo Servone. He's got an excellent rating. Maya Gelber, she was in all-county chorus. Delaney Karan, she got an outstanding score in clarinet for NISMA. Her and her brother Dylan. Dylan also participated alto sax, he also got an outstanding score. They said they'd be a bit late, so hopefully when they come back, you can give them their award. Laura Lynn McCarthy, she got an outstanding as well, perfect score for a violin solo. Karen Nelson of the all-county chorus. Chloe Rowe, got an excellent score on her chorus evaluation. She's going to be here this evening. And Morgan Saran, she played bass clarinet in all-county band and did a piano solo. Our 7th grader, Charlotte Dinnett, she was in all-county chorus, she's going to be here this evening. Evelyn Higbee played Barry Sax in all-county band and also got an outstanding score on her piano solo for NISMA. She can be here either. Jada Kirkwood, she was in all-county chorus. And Mina Sharifi was also in all-county chorus. And the actress, she found Barry back there, she was in all-county chorus. We have Elizabeth Nelson, she was in all-county band on percussion. We also had Arya Shabudaki, who was all-county band and participated on the clarinet, got an excellent rating there. Benjamin Stroll, we'll see shortly as well. He was in all-county band and did a jazz solo on his alto sax, so we'll be performing And John Vogel, who was also in all-county band, and he participated in his on the trumpet, got an outstanding rating. It's a busy time of year. A lot of students unfortunately couldn't make it due to testing and sports and stuff, so hopefully, a couple more will show up in a few minutes. I want to invite, just want to showcase a couple of students. I wish we could all perform tonight. I invited a couple of students. I want to invite Benjamin Stroll to play his alto sax solo quickly. He's still here? There he is. Awesome. Mateo.
Mike Williams.
Who'll be playing the Green Dragon? Yes. Who'll be playing the Green Dragon?
It looks great.
All right. Coffee. 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 All right. will be well-informed, well-thought-out, and therefore just and fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Me, Kent, all of you are welcome to stay for as much of the balance of the meeting as you'd like. We are moving though from the sublime to the less sublime. Day in and day out business of the board. So you're welcome to stay. We'll take a brief, I emphasize brief, break to give those of you who want to head out time to make your way to door. Earlier this year, we had asked, in anticipation of this meeting, we had asked John and Laura to prepare what we called a year-end summary and a look ahead for 2017-18 school year. That's what, as you can see on the board, they have prepared for us. Laura, John, and several of our faculty will present a presentation aligned around our priority areas. So without further ado, Laura, if you'd like to continue with the setup, we'll turn things over to John.
Yep, John's going to be the intro.
Joined by David. Thank you for joining me, David. You're very welcome. Thank you very much for having us at this meeting. You know, I think it's very, very appropriate to start off this section where we're reporting on our district priorities for the first time by thanking you, the board, for the process through which these priorities were identified. There are many, many districts where the identification of district priorities are top-down. A lot of times boards will work with consultants and really come up with their own and then dictate it to the staff. And I have to tell you, I've seen the product of that work and it's not as fruitful as the beginnings of the work that I'm going to show you tonight that the staff has really engaged in. Empowering the professionals in the building to work with you and to work with the community to identify priorities, I think has been a very, very invigorating and rewarding experience for our staff. I think that you'll see that the priorities that we have collectively identified are truly meaningful, are topics that our people are truly passionate about, and I think that will be self-evident from the labor that has started and by the plans that we have in place. So we're going to report priority by priority. We're going to start off with the social and emotional learning priority. And to lead that facet of the conversation, our school counselor, Michael Williams.
Mike, before you get started, let me just cover one housekeeping detail. All of us have had a chance to view an earlier draft of this presentation and to share comments with the administration. And for that reason, and also because it is a very rich presentation and we want to get through it efficiently, I would ask with one exception, if you have questions, make note of them and then let's discuss them with each of the presenters at the end. The one exception would be Mike's presentation because he has another obligation and he has to be on his way. So if we have questions for Mike on the social-emotional portion of the presentation, let's cover that at the end of his presentation, then we'll go through the rest and discuss it all in total.
I appreciate that. And if there are other questions on top of that, just email me and call me. Thank you. Alright, so our goal for social-emotional learning is to further develop systemic structures that impact the school classrooms in a way that influence students' social-emotional development and academic performance. And, you know, studies show that if we have happy kids that are feeling well-rounded and adjusted and supported, they are going to thrive academically. Doesn't mean they won't struggle, but let's take that away. Let's make this a culture where our school is a happy and confident and safe place to be. That's always the goal. So our objective, investigate, this year, investigate best practices and conduct action research in social-emotional learning. So you'll see the first one is continued and aligned, many ongoing K-8 practices with the SEL priority that we have. Some things that have been happening since before I got here that honestly, I don't know if you know, other districts don't happen in other districts, and we're fortunate that they happen. The one big one is the K-8 through 5 guidance classes that are taught twice monthly. And also, the middle schoolers have a guidance class. They've recently merged the health curriculum with the guidance curriculum. Honestly, both are the curriculum that I've sort of made depending on student needs over the years. Jessica Van Decker, our school psychologist, she handles K-1, 2. I push into 3, 4, 5. Our 6th grade, I'll get to it in a little bit because there's a scheduling hole, but we figured out how to make that work. And 7th and 8th, as I said, is embedded in our health curriculum. So 7th and 8th graders are seeing me for half a year for three out of six days, a three out of six-day cycle for 42 minutes. So it does a couple of things for both Jessica and I. Certainly, we feel like we're delivering a strong curriculum in social-emotional learning, but it also allows them to feel like we're accessible. Because in a lot of buildings, school psychologists are in an office testing kids all day, and the guidance counselor's in an office waiting for a problem to come, waiting for a phone call. We are accessible because they all know us, because they see us at least twice a month, and they see us in the hallway. So I think just the fact that we have a program that enables us to push into classrooms makes us part of the culture just by walking into the room. And once we get into the room, we're able to deliver lessons that we feel are helpful for them socially-emotionally. Counseling services are offered to all who need. So we do group or individual counseling. We can do that through IEP or 504 mandated services, or we can do that through a building level. So recently, I had a dad call and say, you know what, things aren't going so well at home, I need you to see my kids. So I have lunch with these two youngsters, sometimes once a week, sometimes twice a week, sometimes once a month. And this is probably since February, eight, March. And so, you know, the fact that that person was comfortable to call me and those kids are comfortable to come in, that was not mandated, it's just part of what we do, and the fact that we have the flexibility to do it is wonderful. Jessica does often the same things. We call them lunch bunches, and it's just a great way. Sometimes you sit and play a game with kids and that's what they want, and sometimes they say you don't have a hard time. So it's interesting, and I feel like we've done a good job of getting the word out there that we're here, use us, utilize us. Okay, initiatives are these large-scale sort of initiatives that's more about really school culture and building community. Because I do believe in building community at the Garrison School, and that's just not about kids and teachers, it's about kids, teachers, parents, Board of Education, faculty members, the garden club, everybody is part of a place where people are happy to be. And so our big initiatives, of course, is the Veterans Day Ceremony, which I came in and started back in 2011. I came in in 2010, we started that ceremony in 2011. A year later, we started the Senior Breakfast, the 6th grade cooks a breakfast with the guidance of Mary Fopiano, one of our volunteers and our retired social studies teacher. This year, we had 30 veteran, 30 senior citizens come and sit in the cafeteria, and we did a little speed dating game, and the kids got to know the adults, and the adults got to know the kids, and it was fantastic. So I had some kids who struggled in the classroom who flourished on that day, who just, they found themselves in their groove, like feeling really good about themselves, and it was really nice to see. We do a caroling for charity, we raised funds for, this year was Leukemia-Lymphoma Society, we raised $375 in about 15 minutes. So it's amazing, because the whole school knows that the 8th grade is going to come around and carol in the hallways the day before the holidays, and kids know to bring their Digi bags or their change, and they're not all bringing $10, you know? And it's amazing that everybody wants to be giving and supportive, and we talk about leukemia lymphoma and what it means to families to have somebody that, you know, that is ill and what it means to be a helper. So that's something that we really like. Tomorrow, we're actually taking the 5th through 8th grade with a joint venture, thanks to the PTA of both schools. We're bringing them to Haldane to see what's called Ryan's Story. Ryan is a young man who was bullied online and in school, and in 2003, at 13-years-old, he committed suicide. While a very scary and harsh story, one that I think is important to tell, one that his father has been telling since 2003. He's been on the national circuit, he's been on Oprah, he's, I love Oprah, I don't know about you guys, but when you're on Oprah, you're laughing. But I saw him more importantly, I've been following him as a resource since 2010, since I became a guidance counselor, and I saw him speak at the parent presentation at my kid's school. I have a 6th grader and an 8th grader, and it was, it was just monumental to me. And it's not all about, you know, scaring people again, it's about, it's about kids really knowing what's going on out there and really being good bystanders and standing up and doing the right thing, which is what we're always working on. So we feel that that will bolster our community 5 through 8. It will be a sad day, it will be a very intense kind of emotional day. Tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, John Halligan is his name, will be at Haldane, and the parents are welcome to come for a parent presentation. So if you can get there, I think that would be really important. It really kind of, he's been changing my life slowly ever since I started to follow him and meeting him, it's very humbling. He's a beautiful man. So we're excited to bring that to kids. Excited, I guess, is the wrong word, but. And also, another large initiative is the OPIT panel that thankfully, the board thinks knows and understands that that is a big problem in our community, not only in the country, but here in Phillipstown. And we were able to do some really good work this year, including the panel. Next week, we have, Laura and I have two meetings with two more people from outside. One is a Putnam family, I'm sorry, CTC Coalition that Cares, or Communities That Care. And then we have another meeting on Monday.
Drug crisis in your backyard.
Drug crisis in your backyard, right. So we're still doing that work, and we're trying to find out who is our best fit to work with our middle school health and guidance program for next year, and we have some good leads on that. Myself and Jessica Van Decker participated in BOSI's Regional Crisis Team. And it is basically a monthly meeting and training with counselors and psychologists and social workers from all over Putnam and Westchester at the Putnam, North and Westchester BOSI, run by Dr. Lynn Allen, who is the superintendent of BOSI. She's fascinating and fantastic. Mike Selin is the assistant. But what it is, is basically if your school has a crisis, you can call this team, and this team will come in and support. Our administration have been fantastic to us in enabling us to go. We're learning there, but we're also doing really good work. Last fall, maybe it was last spring, we had a student in the John J. District, I guess that is Brewster John J., pass away, and I was able to be released for the morning to go and support the students who needed counseling. Sometimes it's nicer for students to be with somebody they've never met than their school counselor. And not, by the way, one school counselor sometimes can't take on the job of 200 kids who are in mourning. So it's really important work, and I feel like we've learned a lot from that, and I appreciate the opportunity for us to be involved in that, and so does, so do the rest of the districts. And hopefully, we'll never have to utilize them, but they're nice to know that they're there. Student-directed IMPs was an initiative that Jen Muller, Lauren Johnson, who's our middle school special ed teacher, really were feeling like it was important for us to start to do. An IEP meeting is an individualized educational plan, and students basically are not in their meetings. Students basically, you know, know that they go to Resource Room, they know that they have a teacher push in, they're not really sure why. By the time they get to middle school, there could be a stigma, I think we do a nice job here at the Garrison School, that there is none, but to make that a better, a better culture for these students, we want to have them invited into their meetings. So we went to five sessions and trainings with professionals at BOSI's this year, the three of us, and basically learned how to incorporate the student into, who's the most important person in their individualized education plan? It's the student. So just this spring, we've had some middle school students attend their meetings, create powerpoints of their strengths and weaknesses, and we want to continue that work. And I think that is, that gives me the chills to sit at a meeting with a student, it really feels good, and they feel good about what's going on, they're taking ownership of their learning, which is important. Okay. So we have an SEL team this year, I think there's probably eight or 10 of us that have joined, and we focused on two target areas. One was mindfulness, which we started really last year. And mindfulness in its basic form is breathing, is your, every kid now from K through basically 5th grade knows what their amygdala is, what their prefrontal cortex is, what their hippocampus is. And basically, when your prefrontal cortex gets foggy because your amygdala's going off over somebody cutting you in front of, at the water fountain, you're, you know, we're going to have kids who are having these explosions. Well, it's an exercise in clearing that prefrontal cortex, basically using your breath, okay? So that's at its basic form, there's lots of other things happening, but all of us, including you as board members, have told your kids, take a breath, right? Now we're really teaching them how to take that breath and what it's going to do to benefit them. We want that prefrontal cortex clear so they can be accessing the learning more, right? Especially when they come back from recess, and there's all kinds of crises, it's unflamed. We visited programs, Jessica and I, at Briar Park School, and that was fascinating. And we also had visitors come check us out, which was always humbling from Eastchester. We attended trainings in mindfulness and yoga for schools. Jessica Van Decker went to New York City in the fall for a two-day training on yoga in the school, so it makes sense for a school setting. It's deepening her knowledge base in mindfulness. She is stretchy, I am not, so I won't do that, but I will definitely support it. We, actually, we do these professional developments for our own faculty, and we were able to run four of these over the last two years, Jessica and I, where we're coming in and we're having 10 or 15 or 20 faculty members after school coming in and learning about mindfulness and doing practices with us and understanding what it is that we're talking about with kids. And then the goal is to have them start to implement these programs, which we've started to do, which has been fantastic. So we're fortunate that we're able to run those classes. Personally, I piloted, because I didn't have the 6th grade this year, I was able to pile, I needed a reason to see them. So Chris Caliendo and Leslie DiNoprio were their home teachers and first-period teachers. And I said, I just need two minutes a day, that's it. I said, they can put their stuff in your room, they come to my room for announcements, and after announcements, I'm going to do one or two minutes, and they're going to be back, and they're going to be back, they're going to be better than you ever had them. And I was like, I hope, right? So they feel after a month or two that the students were much more settled and calm and collected, and much more accessible to learning right off the bat. Basically, the 6th grade came in every morning, we checked in, I let them have a great time, and then the announcements came out, they knew, we're going to stay, we're going to do the pledge allegiance, I'm rallying clothes, now we're ready to sit, and we're ready to breathe with our eyes closed. You thought I would get a fight, I never did. Kids want this, kids are looking for this. I did it for about two months in the 6th grade class, and then I handed it off to the teachers. The teachers have been doing it ever since. They said there is a noted difference between before and after, and that is very encouraging to us as a staff and encouraging to the kids. What we'd like to try and do is find pockets during the day where we can do it some more. Because still, the crisis is in recess, we need to push in more. But Leslie is starting to do some things after recess that she's found some success with, so we're excited about that. Now I'm in the 5th grade classroom for about the last three weeks, and Robin Waters is invested in it, she wants to start doing this next year. So the idea is to build capacity so that all teachers are feeling like they can run this one minute. We call it one minute of mindfulness in the morning, that's it, boom, it's easy. So I'm excited about that. Okay. The Mind Up Program is part of the mindfulness program. This is a scholastic program that we found, so it's very school-friendly. Some people, I just as a side note, are worried that mindfulness is like a religion. It's not. It certainly can be derived from Buddhism, but we don't have any religion based in it. We're all trained counselors and psychologists, our ethical code is that there's, you know, it's all about the public school and religion is not part of what mindfulness is, so I just want to maybe dispel some of that rumor. It's really, really, in its core, about breathing. So it's nice to hear that scholastic is putting things out there, it makes it a little bit of an easier self. We are researching right now a curriculum called Move This World, which is video-based, which would stream into each classroom. John, Laura, Jessica, and I sat through a couple of presentations from somebody that distributes it. I'm on the fence about it, Jess likes it for the younger kids, John, you know, we're still figuring that out, so that's a goal for next year, as well as something to be accomplished this year. And then we did an online mindful training for schools this year, Jessica and I, and that was, that was great, and I still utilize it. In fact, last week, I learned about 4, 5, 6 breathing, and I've been using it. You breathe in for four, you hold for five, and out for six, and kids are saying, ah, you used the 4, 5, 6 breath already. A week ago, I said it to them, and it's been fantastic. So what we're, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, PBIS is what they call it for short, you might have heard of it before. We have been utilizing our Cougar Pride posters, which we have made about two years ago, so that we all have a streamlined dialogue that we're talking to our kids about, hey, you know, what's going on, or you're not trying your best right now, what about number five, you know? So that everybody in every classroom feels like we're all talking the same language. And that's been good, but John Griffiths has done a great job about incorporating that into our town meetings, and I sent you an email a couple of weeks ago, those town meetings are fantastic. The kids want to get this Cougar Pride award, they are proud of themselves when they do it, the rest of the school is proud of them when they do it, they're disappointed when they don't, so we have some work to do, you know? It's not a perfect system, but it's basically utilizing this PBIS system. John actually attended a workshop for administrators at BOSI's this year for PBIS, because we're looking into it. And we started, our PBIS, we're hoping will translate into our discipline system. We did some work with our discipline system this year, we started logging discipline referrals into eSchool. The idea behind that is we want to have like a baseline, and then in a couple of years say, hey, we had, we had 15 reports in eSchool over discipline in the first quarter of 2017-18. Where are we at in 2020-21? We have five, we're doing good work. Or we have 20, oh my gosh, we have to do something different. So that's been helpful, that we can track it. Okay. We also worked on what in-school suspension looks like, not just having a student, not that we like to give them, we barely ever do, and not just have a student sitting there doing nothing, but there's work involved that, why are they there, those kinds of things. Action items. We need to visit schools with component PBIS. I reversed the order of this. First, we have to create a team, and attend BOSI's. A team is usually six or eight people. What you need, what you always need is buy-in with social-emotional learning, even with the curriculum, whether it's Journeys or whether it's Teachers College, you always need buy-in from the faculty. So we feel like people are excited about PBIS. Mindfulness is on this slow train, but now I feel like people are really buying in, so we need that same buy-in from teachers, not only teachers, bus drivers, custodians, anybody who works a hot lunch, that's really important that we're all on the same page. So once we have that team, we're going to attend some trainings, we're going to continue to research our mindfulness practice, training more teachers next year to lead these exercises that are daily. The Move This World, that was the one I was on offense about, we still have to determine what capacity we're going to use that, it sounds like we're going to use it in some capacity. We would like to create a ladder of consequences, so there are consistent discipline procedures in writing. I know we have some procedures in writing, but we don't have it fully fleshed out. And we want to be, just as in the Cougar Pride 1 through 5, we want to also feel like our discipline is the same language. Everybody knows that, uh-oh, you screwed up number three, you're going to go, you know? The same common language that people, kids understand, and most importantly. And choose an assessment tool for the implementation of effectiveness. So basically, a measurement tool, like I was talking about with eSchool. BOQ, which I am just learning about, which would be school-wide benchmarks on quality, which comes from PBIS, or a school-wide evaluation tool that deals with social-emotional. A lot of, I want to say that a lot of our ways we measure is qualitative, because it's touchy-feely. It's not always going to be numbers, although we like data, because data tells us, okay, we're doing a good job, and I was talking about with the referrals. But it won't always be like that. I had a student who, you know, I was curious, is the mindfulness working, is the mindfulness, is anybody utilizing this mindfulness? Some kids would say, yeah, yeah, yeah. I had a student who had an accident over the winter and broke a couple of bones and was stuck there for a little while, and went to visit, great kid, and he said to me, you know, I know we do the mindfulness all the time, and, you know, I don't really ever use it because I don't really ever need it, and he's, right, his amygdala's not always going off, he's a pretty studious kid, nice, pretty calm kid, and he says, and I'm in this accident site, and I'm waiting, and I said, I have to do the breathing Mr. Williams talked about. And I just was like, oh, I said, I thank you so much for giving me that feedback. So we feel like that qualitative assessment right there, it's just, it gives me the chills thinking about it. It was a really nice moment for me and for him, and so we're proud of the work that we're doing. Before I wrap up, and I know I talk 50 miles an hour, I do want to say thank you to John and Laura, because every time I go to them with an idea, they're like, go for it, what do you have now? And we are supported in our social-emotional learning, they understand the value of where our kids are, where we want them to be, they understand that it's messy, and I get the feeling that you all understand that too, and I want to say that I really appreciate the support that we have from the Board of Education, as well as John and Laura, it makes it a great place to work. And, you know, when we can try things, kids will tell us if it doesn't work, always, they'll always tell us it doesn't work. So hopefully, we'll come up with some more things that work. But, so thank you for your time. Anybody have any questions?
That was a very good one. I do too, so. 4, 5, 6, Mike. You anticipated my question with your very last bullet point, so it's good to know that you're looking at how to assess whether it's all working or not. We made this a priority area. It's clear that there is a lot going on, it is broad, deep, rich, it's terrific. And your last point is, how do you know it's working is something you'll work on in the coming year, which I take, that's reassuring. So I don't really have a question, other than to say, I appreciate the way you summed up, and as I say, it feels right. It feels like it's a lot more than we were ever doing in the past, so, and it's consistent with our, you know, with the priority we set for the administration, so, you know, that's reassuring as well. Having said all that, I have a couple of questions over here.
Sure, thank you.
No, I just wanted to ask you a quick one. Your presentation was great, by the way.
Thank you.
I want to know when we could have our minute of mindfulness before our meeting.
Jessica, you're going to ask me, should I, are you going to start the meeting with that? No way.
You mentioned that one point about recording, is that, that's in-house reporting or state reporting?
Yes, it's in-house, so we have also a state mandate that came down a couple of years ago, it's the Dignity Act. So that is reported to the state, and that is if somebody is, if there's bullying based on race, gender, gender identity, well, I mean, anything you can kind of list, is basically a Dignity Act report, but it's, you know, so that report goes to the state. But our in-school reporting, if a student, you know, has a physical altercation with another student, or a verbal altercation that's not considered bullying but inappropriate, or there's something that goes on, any kind of disciplinary will be logged into eSchool that is local. You can choose to report it out, but we feel at this young age, there is no reason for anybody to know what's going on with a student in any way up to 8th grade.
And the ones that go to the state, that's not, it's not attached to a name, it's not a figure.
It's a tally mark, right?
Because we had a big thing many years ago on the board, where, I can't remember what it was called, where they won, the state wanted all this information and.
Yeah, our state reporting is, you know, Laura, at the end of the year, I'm the Dignity Act coordinator, say, "How many Dignity Act reports do we have this year?" Two years ago, we had one, I don't think we had any last year, I can't think of any off the top of my head this year, because in K-1, 2, we're talking about accepting differences, and look, I'm not someone who's perfect, kids do pick on each other for the same reasons they did when we were all kids, but I feel like we're in a culture where it's not really accepted. I had an eighth grader tell me that he's not going to the bullying presentation, and there's a couple of kids who are opting out, and I totally appreciate and understand that, there's a couple of families who feel like, "Maybe it's just too much right now," and I get that, but this student basically said, "And like, there's no bullying, real bullying here, and so like, why do I need to..." It's like, well, I appreciate hearing that, but you know, you have high school to go too, so.
Look forward to it.
Yeah, yeah. To answer your question, nothing really goes to the state at this age.
Oh yeah, 'cause that's what we were concerned about, 'cause they were looking for even like overweight and things like that.
There's a secondary report in addition to the Dignity Act, that precedes the Dignity Act, the rest of the report called VADER, V-A-D-I-R, it's violent.
Violent and disruptive.
Disruptive incident report. And it is of the classification of like homicide and like, you know, knife things. So once again, no names would be attached, and, you know, it does get into some physical altercation, so we have a minimal number of reports that we are ever reporting to the state.
No, this was the back, back, like two years.
Yeah, it doesn't exist anymore.
That we didn't want it.
Yeah, and I want parents and kids to know that things don't go outside of our building, you know, really don't need to.
That's why I wanted to ask you something.
And our, you know, our kids, our parents, our community, we're, you know, we kinda get it, people are, I'm grateful to be here, Jess is grateful to be here, they're grateful to have us, and it's a good working relationship. Not perfect, none of this is perfect, I still feel like, "Ah, my fourth grade curriculum, my God, I get it better," you know, so we're always a work in progress, so, yeah, yeah.
I was wondering what opportunities you see with applying some of the techniques with social-emotional learning toward technology, social media, and the, because a lot of students it seems now have two lives, the virtual life, the life in front of you, and I think that a lot of this is about being present in this moment. Are there opportunities to apply some of these techniques toward that particular virtual reality?
So when a kid gets a Snapchat that makes fun of them, or a text in a group that's unfavorable, it is much harder even for us as adults to not fire it off really quick. So the thing about mindfulness is that amygdala's gonna right away, it's gonna go off, and it's a matter of you being able to take a step back. You know, I had a student yesterday who wanted to write a letter to a teacher, he was very unhappy with the teacher, he was very angry, and he was shocked when I had him write the letter, and I said, "Okay, we're gonna give her this letter in 24 hours, and we're just gonna take some breaths now, so you calm down." So the letter writing calmed him down, and the fact that he couldn't write away, just said, "Here you go," right? So now he didn't ask me for the letter today, he knew that, now I'm calmed down, so, but yes, it is related to it, is it harder for us to do? Absolutely. Because I, there is, there is less of a filter in an adult's online presence, let alone a twelve-year-old. So I start talking about digital responsibility in fourth grade, and later in fourth grade, recently I had this lesson, and only a couple of kids had a cell phone. Most of them have an iPod, and iPod, parents don't realize, has Wi-Fi and can get any app you want, so they can still be connected, even if you think they don't have a phone, they're not connected. By sixth grade, almost every student has some kind of device, and it is sort of, as a tool, it can be a fantastic learning tool, but it is, to me, it's scary, you know, because I have two kids and it's the same thing, they're like, you have to be able to put that phone down. I mean, I see adults online, I'm like, "How did you not step away from that?" You know, we've all, we've all had emails in that trash box, and we have the tools to do it, so I'm kinda beating around the bush, I'm working on it, and I'm addressing both things, and the idea would be that whenever your amygdala goes off, whether it's in real life, face-to-face, or online, you have to be able to take those breaths and clear it before you make a decision on whether to respond.
I didn't mean to set your amygdala off.
Yeah.
But I did want, I did wanna like lay that out for you, that I think it's, you know, by asking the question, I'm also asserting a value in that, because I believe that there is probably curricula out there about mindfulness.
And media. And maybe if there's not, we can write one, honestly.
That, music to my ears.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Other questions for my kids?
Michael, do you have a way of, or of getting some kind of systematic feedback from the kids, you know, some of these programs are working, written feedback, I mean, how do you feel about doing DX?
So I do feedback in different ways with different kids. After my seventh grade guidance and health curriculum, because I was new to the health curriculum, and it was like certain things I had to cover, which really was new to me, I basically asked them ten questions anonymously, and they wrote their answers to those ten questions, and I compared it to the ten questions, I hadn't done it every year, but I think it was about two years ago, I did the same exercise, and so I can see, a couple of years ago, honestly, I think most of the answers, like, "What do you like about guidance?" Is, "Well, I like when there's just free time, we hang out." This time, it was, "What do you like about guidance?" Like, "I like the team building, I like when we have these conversations about, you know, X, Y, and Z." So I don't have a streamlined system that I'm asking questions of every grade, but I'm always searching for feedback from the kids, whether that's a one-to-one conversation, like I might have a, I might have something that happens in the building that I have to address a class full of kids and say, you know, this, and what I'll probably do is just on the playground, say, "What do you think about what we said today?" You know, one-to-one, now that nobody's around, and I'll say, "Well, I think you could've said this," or, "I think it was great, Mr. Williams." So I have a lot of ways to get the information I'm looking for, to see if it's effective, but I don't have like, I don't have a streamlined, in effect, I don't have a streamlined question-and-answer kind of a thing. Is that, that's it, yeah.
Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was very, very helpful. John Griffiths, you wanna move on to TF Literacy?
I do. And Mary Karp and Julie Green are going to be presenting, don't forget, don't stay mindful.
We're really excited to talk to you about literacy, Mary and I both signed up to be on the literacy committee team, it's part of the goal building, and there's several other teachers on the team as well. And our main goal this year for literacy is to adapt a cohesive and scaffolded, scaffolded K-8 reading/writing model and provide high levels of professional development that support teachers in learning how to use it. And so far this year, while our goals might seem, our accomplishments might seem a little smaller in comparison to my accomplishments, they're really not, because within each accomplishment are lots of important details. So our first accomplishment this year was that we started to implement and use the STAR 360 computer assessment program in both reading and math, and that's administered across grade levels, K through eight, and it's a benchmark assessment, students take it in the fall, the winter, and the spring. With that data, we establish what students might fall into certain levels for tier support, tier one, tier two, and tier three as far as RTI. It also shows a lot of growth with students throughout the year, so many students start here, and then they kind of end up here by the end of the year. We have interviewed and selected literacy consultants to work with. We started this year, the year with Teachers College, and Chaney was with us on our very, very first second-day back in September. But in the meantime, we've started to work with, I think it was the Words of Advice literacy consultants, Melanie and Kate Bishop came in, because it's very high demand to get Teachers College, I think we're on a waiting list right now, but we, the teachers talked, and we really enjoyed working with Melanie and Kate, it's been phenomenal. The key part that I enjoyed, that I sometimes felt we weren't able to do here, being a K-8 school, was that it was really tailored to each individual grade level. So K-2 teachers got to meet for a day, 3-5 met, and then the middle school teachers met, so it was really geared towards that age level of student. So when we met with them, it was, we would sit with them for a little bit, Kim and I, second grade would meet, and then Kate would come into our classroom and do it like a model lesson for the teachers to kind of see, what does the writing workshop model look like? And then in keeping with that, we've also focused on conferencing individually with students, and what are the other students doing during that time, so it's been very, very beneficial. We selected and began implementing Lucy Hawkins' units of study in writing, and I have to say, it's really been so fun to see what the second graders have done this year with writing. We started out the year writing narrative stories about their lives, then we moved into information writing, all about stories, we moved into book reviews, where they got to publish their book reviews, and now we're working on poetry, and it's, it's just this year to see them love really writing, so they look forward to that time of the day, it's a set time, it's a forty-five-minute period of time where we're all just doing writing. The benefits of units of study is that, okay, so this year in second grade, we do narratives, when they go on to third grade, they will be working on narratives, but in a different type of a scenario. So they're building on each genre across grade levels, so it carries all the way up through the grades. And then in keeping with that, when we've been meeting with these consultants, we've also been able to talk to other teachers across the grade levels and have communication about, "Well, what are you doing with this year, are you using this book?" And then kind of seeing where students are growing. So those are accomplishments this year with writing, and I think we'll be definitely continuing next year to focus on that development.
So I just wanna agree with Julie and say how terrific I think the writing program is that we're involved in, and how great the cohesiveness of, like you're building on each year. So I've been working with the third and fourth graders this year, and doing the same units of narrative, opinion writing, and really terrific.
Words of Advice has worked with Teachers College, so they're based in training from Teachers College, so they're kind of like, I think what they're finding is that Teachers College has been overloaded so much that they can't even like meet the demands of all the districts that are using them, so there's like a lot of offshoots of consultants, so the consultants we're using now are trained in that, I think, but they're not formally with the Teachers College program. But it's just really important to continue the professional development that we've already started, because we've made lots of progress, but we still have lots to go, so, and then also, you know, carving out that consistent block of time for writing, because that has been huge this year, that kids are writing every day, and if there's that solid amount of time, we really need to make sure that we're, we keep that in mind as we're going forward, so that's what we're also looking to do. So now, we've made all this progress with the writing, we need to create a cohesive reading program. So we've had different programs, we've talked to you about probably in the past, the Journeys Now people are ready to do the work that goes along with the writing, to make it all come together, I think would be really, really important. So we're really looking forward to doing continued work with Melanie and Words of Advice, they have been so helpful. And Melanie was trained in reading, she's gone to, she's done reading research through the Teachers College, and she's just such a wealth of knowledge, and comes, with her comes all the work that she's done, that she's adapted, she's adapted different programs, and really, what's so wonderful, Julie kind of said, is that she has been a trainer, she has taught teachers for so long, she comes in and teaches a lesson to kids, we get to see, and also tailors the lesson, so it's not just, like, you're working directly with her, and you are sitting right with her, and you're talking about the kids that you're working with, and she can, she really makes it personal. So the next bullet, we are selecting the Lucy Hawkins' units of study for reading, that's, it kind of just makes sense, because we're already doing the writing. The framework is consistent again through K-8, so it really makes sense, and it supports the writing instruction, and it's a research well-noticed program, so it's very important. By the end of June 2017, we're, oh, Melanie did do already the introduction to all our staff, so that we are trained in this, like, just introductory way of the reading workshop, which included a lab site, so we watched her teach, and she is very inspiring. Also, the K-2 teachers have worked very hard, thank you, for, to build the foundation skills that kids need for reading, decoding, spelling, and handwriting, that just allows them in the future to be more fluent readers and writers. That's so, so important to have that foundation. So we've done that this year, and continue to do that, we've been doing that for a bunch of years now. What we missed, like, we're using the STAR now, but what we're missing is some more assessment that we've had in the past, we used to use the DRA, and we used to use AMES Web, it gave us some fluency measures or some more, like, real reading assessment, and so we're looking toward, thanks to Julie's research and Melanie's advice too, that the Fountas and Penel assessment system is a really great tool to connect assessment to instruction, and will give us ways to move forward in our instruction, so we're really excited about that. So what we hope to accomplish next year is to continue the support with Melanie. The one area that Melanie is going to work with teachers on is developing our classroom libraries. Many of us have extensive classroom libraries, it's kind of like, how do we organize them so they're appropriate for children? And also, you know, what does a library look like in kindergarten and then in first grade? To have a cohesive flow of a library system. So with that, having one area of just like, just genre books, all fairy tale books, and then just another area with books geared toward students' individual reading levels. So we're hoping that we can increase our books for our library, and also match the units of study reading material as well. We're going to get trained and implemented in the reading assessment with Fountas and Penel. That's something like Mary said, we were doing, and teachers do do it more on an informal basis, we'll do running records when we do guided reading, we'll do DRAs every now and then on students we think might need to be assessed a little more closer, but we don't at this point have something where every student is getting assessed on their guided reading level or independent reading level. So this is, I'm looking forward to doing this with children, to kind of see where they're at. And also, the benefit of this is, okay, so when we do meet with those students, and we are doing guided reading with them, are we using the appropriate level book for that child? We don't wanna set any child up for frustration, we wanna make sure that they're reading a book that is just right for their instructional level, so this assessment will help us do that. Across three through eight, implement and continue word analysis, vocabulary skills, that's a big part across all grade levels, you know, when children are reading, you know, you assume they're understanding everything in the book, but they often come to a word or something they don't know, and then they move past it. So we need to make sure that they have a strong base in knowledge of those vocabulary words. And then in keeping with that, the RTI plan, so what are we doing for the students that fall below when we do the Fountas and Penel benchmarks? What extra services are they getting? How are we going to help them move up? Okay, our goal is to always make sure students are moving up. So the RTI plan would help teachers across grades to know, "Well, what are you doing at first grade for this student, and then what are you doing at second grade for this student?" So just aligning it so everybody's on the same page. And then keeping with that, what are we going to do with all of our information that we have? Is it working? So we're going to use our available data and assess the effectiveness of our action items. I also want to say, when Melanie came in and did the dental lesson and she did the reading workshop, you know, model with us, I kind of changed a little how I was doing things with my class. We, we always did like a guided reading block. And students were doing different things, but they, they were doing different things not associated with reading. One group would be doing like a word study and another group would be doing writing. So after she came in, I'm like, let me give this a try and see how it goes. So we've been doing reading workshop where second graders are just reading for a good thirty, forty minutes. And the other day, I heard a little girl sitting there, she's like in the corner of the room reading. And all I heard her say was, reading. Reading is like my favorite part of the day. So I'm like, okay. So this is like, I think our main goal is to make sure that all students love reading and, and writing. So I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call an audible here at the, at the line of scrimmage. I know I said earlier, but I do think there's, there's enough here that with Nancy's indulgence, because she has the next presentation, I have a question for you too. If, if there are questions now, why don't we, why don't we get into the round and wait to go through technology facilities before that? Also, so having said that, if anyone has questions on what you're just seeing? I have one. So it sounds like, it sounds like the students are generating reams of copy persuasively, informatively, et cetera.
Yeah, the bulk has increased.
Right. So there's a lot more content being generated. What kind of, what kind of feedback do the students get with each piece that they generate? Does someone read it, mark it up, sit with them? How do they, how do they, well, how do they get feedback on what they're creating?
Well, right now, we do individual conferences. So we keep like individual logs for each student. So we'll meet with them individually. We also have rubrics that we use to assess their writing. And then they also sometimes do peer assessments where they'll share their writing with each other. And also editing checklists on their own. So they're self evaluating their writing. And then the, the goal of every unit is a publishing party or a case at the end where they celebrate their writing.
That's exactly what I would say, the rubrics for sure. And, and I, I don't think we're ever looking to kind of grade students' writing so much as just encourage them to write. So it's like finding, finding, helping them find their place on these checklists or rubrics and saying, okay, this is where you are. Let's try to, to get to this next level. But also celebrating their, the writing they are doing.
And then in keeping with that, the volume of writing. So when we did our narrative unit and they had like pieces and pieces of writing, different stories at the end, they got to go through and self select. So they were, they were kind of trying to find their best piece or what they thought would be, you know, the idea of the best piece. We also use a lot of mentor texts and models for them to see so they know what it's supposed to.
So it's fair to say that, that if not every single piece generates specific feedback, there is a substantial bulk of what they're creating is, they, they hear about it and they hear about how it can be improved and reshaped, retalked, whatever. So that's.
They are, they are encouraged to do their own, first of all, set their own goals and also to do revision and editing all through the process. It's never, a lot of Teachers College idea is that a piece isn't, it's not like you're done. You can always make revisions, you can always make, make changes and make things to a better product. And I mean, then you do stop working on a piece and then move on to another piece, but.
Other questions?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, you know, encourage you to continue forward with what, with what you're, you're doing here. This is, you know, a welcome inclusion into curriculum. And building cohesion is, is probably the biggest, biggest factor. It's not a small priority at all. It's the bulk of, I think, what a K through eight school does and certainly in K through five is critical. This, the reading and writing instruction in the K through five is sort of critical to the success of any student after. Yeah, that's great. I guess one of the things that I'd like to know is, how often are the Words of Advice folks coming to the school? How often are they embedded in the classroom? I think that you feel that the embedded professional development is, is much, much more useful than going off to a workshop.
Yeah. I mean, there are several workshops like that FOCIS offers. I went to one on Fountas and Penel this year, but it is good for them to come in and kind of, you know, I think we all have an idea of what it's supposed to look like and be like, but to actually just see it, you know, hands on is, is good. And also, it gives us time to, to kind of plan out. You know, that's the one thing teachers wish they had more of time. You know, it's like, we, we have this writing program, we're like, what are we going to do? How are we going to do it? To just sit with a consultant and have time to look and make sure it's being implemented the right way is, is beneficial.
How, I guess that's one of the big things about the academic planning would be getting the, the proper feedback to make sure, to, to feel confident that you're, when you're, you know, creating new curricula, you have to feel comfortable that, how does this look? Right? How, who do you go to to get that feedback? In sense of like, is it, you do it with a team? Do you, do you doing it with, I guess we have folks in line to be focused on literacy, literacy specialists next year. Believe, right? Something like that's happening somewhere?
Yes.
So, how do you?
That would be dope.
So I think, I'm wondering, you know, what's the best way for you to get that feedback? You know, when you know your lesson plan is really sort of structured, organized and hitting the right notes?
Right. Oh, I feel like also, you know, we are a one building school. So it's like we have one kindergarten, we have one first grade. So I know many teachers like rely on logs or other teachers that are using the program. But also, we work really well with each other too. So kind of just talking with each other and getting feedback. I have to say, initially, when we looked at this units of study for writing, it was overwhelming. Like, one lesson is like four or five pages long. So, and I think it's just knowing that we don't have to do it all, but making sure we get the key parts down for the children.
I'd also like to interject two, I think, important points that address what you're saying. Part of the, what you're calling the embedded professional learning is just the practice of going into, a teacher going into another classroom to watch our master teacher at work. However, that, so that's something that I, I think is fairly new in, in our culture. And something that I think can continue even when that coach is not in the building. So I think just the, just the predisposition that it's okay to leave our classroom and watch another teacher teach is going to be vital to our professional learning. And I think we'll address what we do to, to get more critical feedback. I think that we're going to get to a point pretty soon that Julie would feel comfortable saying, do you mind if you could get a, a coverage to come and watch me teach? And that's going to be a powerful model. Hand in hand with that, we've also had two professional learning experiences after school this week that just was centered around examining student writing, where one person was, was presenting a compelling writing piece where things might not have gone exactly how they expected. And we use a protocol to have colleagues basically discuss all of the teaching that went around that writing to start to, just to start to mine the potential, you know, next steps that teacher could engage in with that student writing. So it's very exciting.
There's a lot of planning. Do you feel like you have sufficient planning time to pull all this off?
You can always use more.
Is there a calendar that you sort of got to go by in, in your head?
There is, there is. And we plan out, you know, this should be done by this time and try to kind of sequence it out. Where, you know, like, this was our first year. I, I like dabbled with units of study before, but not like as a whole year program. So kind of like this year being our first year, we're like, oh, that, that narrative unit kind of went a little bit longer than, you know, we anticipated. Great stuff was happening during that time, but now we know like next year moving forward, oh, we might need to tailor this down a little bit. And then we were able to get all of our units in this year, so that was.
And the Fountas and Penel, with your, your libraries, the in-class libraries are not leveled?
They, it depends on, most classroom teachers at the primary level and up, I think even up through fifth, have leveled libraries. I'd have, like, the bulk, like, we need more. You know, so, for example, when, next year, when we're doing units of study in reading and it's the nonfiction unit, we want to make sure we have enough nonfiction material that, that, you know, all the children can benefit from. So I, I, most teachers have built up their libraries over the years. So, but it's just trying to find books that reach all the children, all across the levels.
Can I ask you one quick, just a quick, quick one? With all this writing, you also do, you deal with penmanship or are we teaching longhand?
In, in the primary grades, they're, they're doing that through the foundations program.
So they're learning script?
Well, not script. They're doing handwriting in K one. And actually, this year, we started in second grade doing personal introduction.
I ask that because that, that comes, people do ask that around. You don't teach script anymore and I said, yes, we do.
The state does. They, they, they do in third grade and then this year.
Now it's out there for the public to hear.
We started, we have the third grade manual, like, the, the second graders started to do beginning letter formations. We're getting through all the lowercase letters right now. We're really excited about it.
We're just starting the process of getting the script.
Well, no, no, but that's, yeah, but just as I say, people have asked, you know, thinking we're not doing it because they heard that the state, you know, says somebody has blocked the penmanship here, but, you know.
Yeah. So it's our first year in second grade, but it seems to be, it's going really well. Very excited to do it. Second graders were trying to do it anyway because they're always looking at older brothers and sisters. So now they're like, they get to do it themselves.
Thank you.
I, one question is really for John and for Laura. And it goes back to a discussion we had in September. We're going to review the results of the two thousand sixteen ELA scores. And it's fair to say there were a number of areas of concern. One of the things we all agreed at the time was that the New York State ELA test is just, is but one measure and an imperfect one at that. And then we also had a number of holdbacks and that may have affected the scores and so forth. And we also said, in addition to the New York State ELA test, we have a host of other metrics that we use to measure progress. In fact, it was referred to earlier in this presentation, over the course of the year, beginning, middle and end with, like I said, with STAR. The question is, and I'm not asking for quantitative assessment of progress in, over the past ten months, but I'd just like to know notionally how you feel and what, and not only how you feel, but what your assessment is of the data you've collected so far this year about progress we've made against the literacy priority.
And so, can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
And concretely, what are we doing next year to address that?
Great. So, so there's, there's two different answers to, to that question. When you start to look at, at individual results, there are no patterns to be gained. So I cannot report that there is an overall trend towards everybody growing over time. So we can't report that right now. What we can say that when we look at the data for our school, that we are well positioned in terms of growth data. So when you look at the overall metrics for our school as reported by STAR, we are just above the fiftieth percentile in terms of overall achievement. We're supposed to be, students are supposed to be at grade level according to the scale score at their individual grade level. And also on the growth charts, we are above the fiftieth percentile in terms of growth. So we're in the, we're in the fiftieth range in terms of achievement and growth, which means that overall, our trajectory is very, very positive. So if you look at a, at a, a summary of all of our, of our school data, we're looking good. The most promising data is when we do a standards analysis. So what I could do within STAR three sixty is I could go through and I could basically do a report on every single common core standard by grade level. And that's actually where we're showing the most prominent, promising side of growth, where for the most part, when we're looking at K five, we're looking at eighty-five percent mastery of, eighty-five percent of students in an individual grade level mastering any particular standard. So that is very, very different than what we've seen as our results on, of ELAs in the past. And it's something that we will be, I will be interested in comparing that data from STAR three sixty and see if it, if it actually correlates to any changes on this year's ELAs as we get them back.
So suffice to say you are doing those. It sounds like you're looking very carefully at this. You're looking at it regularly and you anticipate doing the relevant comparisons when the ELA scores are out this summer?
And I, and yes, I've been doing that as a principal. And I think, you know, one of my professional growths that doesn't sort of end up there, part of my professional plans that don't end up on an action item is also now to start to get the faculty to be able to become more adept and really collectively. I know they go and they look at their own students and get information diagnostically about where their students are. But to start to have some larger conversations around data, I think would be a good goal as we engage in this work next year as well.
Yeah, I, I, the, I wanted just to add one more thing and I'll shut up. The notion, the, the thing that is kind of critical in the success of this implementation and the effectiveness of what goes on here is, is really, you know, your ability, I believe, to facilitate this process and the teacher's ability to access this process, right? So what I mean by that is to look at that data and say, okay, twenty seven, you know, two thousand seventeen, this is what I know in the fall, what, what's probably going to be happening. This is how I can plan accordingly. I've got my feedback. What I'm, what I'm hoping that we achieve in this district is to get to that place which was actually recommended through the task force and best practices, which is real live feedback about the effectiveness of pedagogy and the, the belief that the tool you're using is working. And when you know the tool you're using is working, you're going to keep using it.
Yeah.
And you know when it's working for this student, you know when it's working for that student, you know when you have to differentiate to, to make the thing work. You know, and I think that's, that's what's going to reinvest us in this whole process is that, oh, this works. It's not just something that's coming down from the top. It's something that I can see it's working. And that, that's huge for, for the success of this entire priority is the ability to keep that engine of buying, analyzing, investigating what tools are working best and getting real feedback on it in real time rather than months long or year long lag on data and curriculum adjustments.
I couldn't agree with you more. I'm very optimistic.
Julie, Mary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, you want to introduce Nancy?
Nancy, she needs a, she needs a introduction.
I've been waiting.
I know, you've been very patient. Thank you very much for that.
Sue's been really good.
Well, thank you. And actually, I'm very excited, of course, to speak about technology. The fact that it's a district goal makes me even happier because, as you know, I feel so strongly about it. So the fact that it is a goal, it's very supported by both the board, the administration. And I thank you for that, for making that a district goal. So of course, with technology, our real goal is to facilitate the effective integration of technology in a way that is focused, deliberate and aligns with learning outcomes. And I think that's really important to point out because we don't just buy technology to have technology. We buy it because it really works and supports the curriculum in all areas. Just, we talked about literacy, math, social studies. It's all about using tools to support that curriculum. So everything we look to buy and we look to use is always in a way that's integrated and we don't just buy it to have it and it's a cool thing. So we just wanted to point that out. We have a lot of accomplishments. There's probably even more than these slides are going to present as far as technology. But these are the main ones that we wanted to focus on. And the greater access for students to learning devices, which was a transformation for our school this year. I came to the board last year and I provided you with results of our survey that we use to collect data every year from students, parents and teachers about technology. And I came to the board and presented to those results last year and it really was showing how we were lacking student devices in our school. We at the time had, you know, a middle school laptop cart that was being shared. We had desktops in a lab and we had a few desktops in the classrooms. But we were getting to a level that the teachers wanted to do more in their classroom with technology and we really needed more devices. So I thank you because that was supported and we were able to purchase. And Sue is always keeping up. keeping a, a good check on the technology budget for me, and, and was able to provide devices. So, this was a huge thing we did this year, it was a one-to-one student Chromebook devices in grades six to eight, this was our first year of implementation of that. It went very well, as far as I'm concerned, as far as an implementation rollout, there's a lot that goes behind a one-to-one rollout, so I was very pleased with how that all worked. All the devices are being used, we have nothing sitting around, and they're really used in the classroom, which is much nicer to have the teachers to be able to have these devices actually in their classroom and using them all the time for every class, rather than picking up and having to sign up for a lab, or not having the devices they need for their instruction and their student learning. So, that was a one-to-one Chromebook. In the grades three through five, what we did provide was a thirty student Chromebook, so we had one cart of thirty Chromebooks that were shared by the grade three, five this year, that worked very well. But of course, when you start sharing and you start utilizing more the Chromebooks, which, really, the Chromebooks support the whole Google Apps for Education, which I was going to get into, is about the Google Accounts, is that the Chromebook lends yourself to that environment. So, shared device is nice, but the grades three through five, of course, after getting a taste of what it's like to have it in their classroom, we want it more, so for next year, we're going to be going to a one-to-one Chromebook for even grades three through five. Student iPads was another focus we did for next year. This was more of a spread out number of iPads in the classroom. K two had five iPads per classroom that was shared or used in a center activity or for projects, so they were shared. Three, five received more iPads because they were purchased to support the Project Lead the Way curriculum that they used for grades three through five, so there was a more need that was required for that curriculum to have more iPads and the apps that were needed for the Project Lead the Way. And grades six through eight previously had four iPads, and we added another six, so they have ten iPads in the middle school that they share among the classrooms for special projects. Another big thing we did this year, we researched interactive LCD models, the Technology Committee, and that's, I really want to say, I think that's why we're very strong in technology. We have a very cohesive technology committee that's comprised of all different grade levels, all the administrators want it, Sue is on it. So, I think by having a very cohesive group like that, we make really good accomplishments in this area, because you have input from all the different people, and all the decision-making goes on in the technology. We meet regularly throughout the year, we have our goals, we have things that we always need to work on, it never seems like we have nothing on the agenda, because there's always plenty to do. But I really want to say that our Technology Committee really makes this all come together and really work well for all the things we accomplish. So, the LCDs, and the reason why we did a whole research this year is because our smartboards that are currently in the classrooms, they're now outdated, they're out of warranty, they're all like seventy, ten years old, and the replacement tool for those smartboards is now called these interactive LCDs, they're TVs, but they're interactive, there's a lot more choices now available with those. So, we had vendors come in to the Technology Committee, we looked at different models, we looked at the different features, and we did that actually throughout the year, and the Technology Committee really kind of decided which one they liked more. It's more to set us up for which one we want to go with when we start replacing them. Provide greater access for students to learning devices, this is kind of what I mentioned. So, we had one-to-one for grades six through eight last year, for next year, we will have one-to-one for grades three through eight, so that three, five will now not have a shared device, they'll have one-to-one, they'll have them in their classroom every day, and they won't be need to share the day Chromebooks. The replacement of the smartboards, as I said, is with these interactive LCDs. The funding for that is coming from the Smart School Bond Act, it's not coming from budget funds, so we are waiting for the approval of the state to approve our plan. We are anxiously waiting for that approval, so that we're in a position where we can start replacing smartboards with these LCDs with that money. Accomplishments, okay, so for Google account activations, which is really what they use on the Chromebooks, all their student, student Google accounts, we already activated last year grades five through eight, this year, we lowered that to grades three and four, so those were the new student Google accounts that we activated for this year. We did additional classroom trainings for Google with the teachers, this has been instrumental. The previous year, we had done Google training on Google Drive, Google Classroom, all the Google Apps for Education before we even got the student devices. So, with that professional development, you're always setting your teachers up for success because they're comfortable with the tool, they want to be able to use it, and then when you give it to the students, they're just going to learn it no matter what, because they pick up everything. But we did the right training before we incorporated that, and then we did even the more advanced training of Google with the teachers this year, to even learn more advanced concepts with the Google Apps for Education. The online school subscriptions with P Day, I've seen an increase in online subscriptions from the teachers, a lot of these come from the teachers, they're not coming from me, some I might give them suggestions, but a lot of them they find on their own, and I think that's because we have more student devices, that they're finding more uses for it, and more things they can incorporate in their classroom. So, the typing agent was, I think, talked about at the Technology Committee, that was an area, we had an old keyboarding program that was called Type to Learn Four, it was around for a long time, it was not web-based, so it was locally installed on the computers, so that means it could only be used at the school, it couldn't be accessed at home. So, we knew we had to look at a new keyboarding program for all the grade levels, we did an evaluation, we chose Typing Agent, I think it was a good selection, we have been using that throughout the year, there's been more of a, a time that the teachers do allow to do that, I believe it's like thirty minutes per week that they've applied at school, but the good thing about the Typing Agent is that the schools, the kids can also practice it at home, they have individual logins and passwords to web-based, so as long as you have a browser, they can practice keyboarding at home. So, I think the expectation is that we do keyboarding at school along with other things, but it also can be set up for the kids to practice at home and have some home use to practice their keyboarding skills. These other ones that are mentioned, Quizlet Teacher, it's more of a formative assessment tool that came from one of the teachers that was interested in using that tool, Accelerated in Reader and Math is another new program, Res, Res Plus eBooks, that is again supporting literacy, okay, so that's K two leveled books that we had an original subscription, but we went up to a higher one that gave the teachers more capabilities in assigning eBooks to, to their students in K two. And I believe those, they have individual access to even at home, right? And they can use them at home. Again, a lot of them are web-based, so it's really good that they can have the homeschool connection to even be reinforcing these concepts at home when they're not even at school. Woot Math is another, I love the name, Tools for Factions and Decibals, and we have a lot of math tools that, I have to say, Mrs. Waters is, is just finding more and more tools to incorporate, I can't keep track of all the math online tools that she keeps wanting to, to bring up, but a lot more online tools to really reinforce math concepts in a better way that is more engaging, or maybe a different way for students to understand a concept. Okay, provide teachers and students with access to online learning tools. So, the whole part, point of Google Apps for Education and Google Drive is it really sets up a collaborative learning environment. So, by us setting up these student Google Accounts, it gives the kids capabilities of sharing documents, the interaction online with the teacher, collaboration, that's what all Google Apps does, it sets up that kind of environment, and we've been doing more training with Google Drive and classroom training. Google Forms, Google Forms is something, it's another app within Google Apps for Education that we want to look more into training, because as you master one like Google Docs or Google Sheets, Google Forms, you can do a lot more creating, creating tests with Google Forms, creating assessments with Google Forms, so we're going to do some additional training with that. New monitoring software for Chromebooks. So, I want to say that the Chromebooks, the one-to-one, was a very good implementation for the year's first year, but I think we're always looking to make sure that it's being used as an educational tool, and that we have the proper things in place to make sure we're monitoring that. On the devices, we've made some changes this year, we have a content filter, of course, of what we're allowing students to be able to view and not view, but we also have, the Chromebooks themselves have specific apps that you can allow or restrict, we had to fine tune that this year, because it was our first year with the Chromebooks, and of course, the middle school students will always test make in trying to get into things that we want to keep them educational, so we had to make some tweaks on how we were allowing apps that they could access on those devices. And the Go Guardian tool is a software that provides additional monitoring on those devices, so that we can track things a little bit better, we have more monitoring over sites they visited, just, just teachers can look at what they're looking at, so we decided that was a good tool that we would like to incorporate for next year, so that's a new software that we're going to add to the Chromebooks, just a little bit more like we're watching you kind of thing, which is always good. The revised Student AUP's Google Permission Chromebook Policies, there's a lot of forms there. Now, I might be a little policy crazy, but the IT, the auditors of the state, they have gotten much stricter with their IT audits, so we have not recently had an IT audit, we've had a financial audit, but I've heard from other districts that their guidelines on IT have gotten a lot more stricter when they come in and what they look for and what they expect to have in place. So, with that anticipation, I've looked at what other districts have been written up for on their IT audits, I'm looking to tighten up things that we could really improve on with our forms and our policies to get us in a better position. Not only do they help us with the audits, but I just feel with permission forms, they, they set very clear guidelines to students, to parents, to everybody involved on what's expected, okay? And then if something does go wrong, you always have that to go back to, to say, this is what we expected of you to use it for, and this is how it's supposed to be used, and it's very clear. So, I'm going to just be working on revising those and getting them a little bit more up to date, because we have more devices in the building. New online subscriptions, so once again, the online subscriptions seem to be growing here at the school, the more access they have, the more things the teachers are finding and want to incorporate into their student learning. Newsela is a nonfiction reading subscription that we're going to be subscribing to next year. Splash Math, another math one, that's a K five, that's supposedly a phenomenal tool, and all these things, I just want to mention, the teachers trial, per trial basis, to see if it's going to work, and then after the trials are over, they come to me and say, Nancy, we want this, and then I have to negotiate the deal with the vendor. So, we, we really try to figure out if it can be used by other teachers, how much of a subscription we need, is it by school teacher license, and try to incorporate the best way and the best subscription for our school based upon everybody using it. Wixi is a, a digital canvas tool that supports writing and art, we're going to be trying that, and Discovery Education, Mr. Caliendo, Family Scene Trial, it's a social studies textbook that incorporates with social studies. The Clarity Assessment Tool, that I did want to mention, that I'm sure you've heard me speak about before, this is the tool that we do use for assessing how we're doing in technology, okay? This is our third, fourth, this is actually our third year of collecting.
The next.
Yeah, so next year will be the fourth. I'm finding it a very valuable tool, Laura, John, and Sue, we all have access to the results, I've shared it at the Technology Committee, but it really, it gets, it collects data for both students, so you get the student input, you get parent input, you get teacher input, and it's really a checkmark for us to look at technology every year and look at how we're doing in different areas. So, when I came to you last year and said, you know, really it's showing, we're really lacking student devices, I have the data kind of to support and show that we are lacking in that area, and it shows how we grow in areas. So, the categories are like classroom, access for students and teachers, skills and environment, and you monitor how well you do in that every year, you want to see growth, but you want to see, hey, maybe we went down one year, we need to really focus on that. So, areas that we really did improve in, that I saw in the Clarity, and this is a whole other presentation I could do, but we really increased in student access, which was no surprise that the results show that, because we've got more devices. Teacher skills and student skills went up from last year, our professional learning for our environment was an increase from last year, that's because I think we did a lot of professional development for our teachers, and our classroom, our classroom teachers of the use of the four Cs increased from last year, so that communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking, because we have incorporated Google Apps for Education, we've seen an increase in the teachers' use of the four Cs. So, I can use that tool to really monitor and help us plan. Okay, objective three, use online tools for more efficient access information. We have spent a lot of time in looking at other, you know, our systems and where we can be more efficient in utilizing features that, that are available to us, that we can take advantage of. School Dismissal Manager, not sure if you had heard about, but it's now an automated system that the parents can use instead of sending in notes and making phone calls to interrupt teachers during their classroom time, that's an automated process, I think it seems to be working very well. I think teachers are pleased, they're getting less phone calls in their classrooms, it's, the, the parents have access to change it during the day, to change any school dismissals, but I think that's really been a very good tool that's working very well for the dismissal process. K five report cards, so our, our K five report cards previously were not kept in e-school data, they were a separate software that we used, and we realized that it's, it's more important for us to get a lot more of the features that we can incorporate into our student information system, which is e-school data. So, the K five report cards are standard-based report cards that were implemented this year. They are web-based, so the teachers can access them at home, which is huge for them. The other report cards, they had to, they were all locally installed, and they had to work on them at school. So, now that it's in e-school data, they can work on them at home, and everything is housed in our student information system the way it should be. Middle school, we've made progress, and what they were previously using for progress report cards and grade books, which were separate programs, they are now using, again, the features of e-school data, and the progress report cards and grade books are also an accomplishment that they learned to do in e-school data this year. Again, now the next point, prepare parent portal for e-school data. The reason why we were preparing is the focus was to get all of these things that we want to eventually push out for the parents to see into e-school data, so that when we push out the portal for them to view, we have all these things available for them to see. So, the focus this year was really trying to work on getting all those things into e-school data to put us in a better position for the portal. And we will be ready for the portal in the fall of 2017, so the parents will receive activation accounts, they can log in, and they can see various things that we have in e-school data. That will be, you know, different things that we might start out pushing, the beginning of the school year, it might be contact information for the parents to be able to update their own contact information for emergency and that kind of thing, we might then push out, they can look at their child's report card, it'll be kind of, you'll see during the school year, a staggered approach of what they'll be able to say. Blackboard, so a lot of, I have to, I kind of say, I look at mind-boggling how many new systems we put in this year and how much we've done in technology, it is tremendous. So, really, the accomplishments, we should be proud that we have done all this in, in one year. Blackboard, our previous website was with a tool called Echoc, and Echoc was, was either, it was the choice of either going to the new platform or looking at a different website tool. We looked at various tools, Blackboard seemed to be the one that we liked. So, last, I think the end of last year, we launched our new school website with Blackboard, I think everybody's very pleased with how it looks. And the other thing that we added this year is the middle school now has a homework page on our website, so students and parents can view whatever the middle school homework is on the website for this year. The Blackboard Parent Connect is our emergency notification system that pushes out for our snow alerts, and Laura takes part, so it's nice that we're using both the same product, because we can now integrate them, it's integrated, and when Laura does an announcement, it's automatically pushed out to our website, and that wasn't done before, when you have two And that wasn't done before when you have two different systems working. So I'm pleased on how that's gone.
Awesome.
Is it froze? Is it froze? We were doing so well, John. Just maybe hit a skate. Yeah, I do. And actually, I think I have a printed copy. Is it on here? Yeah. So if we don't, I always have a backup technology. So let me just see. First, yeah, we only actually had one more slide. So I can start going over that anyway. So for seventeen eighteen, for the online tools, our action items for that would be to activate the parent portal. So we're going to be pushing that out in the world. So that's our, that's our goal for seventeen eighteen. More professional development for the middle school grade book because they started using the grade book this year. But as you know, once you start using it, that's when you have more questions about the tools. So we're going to give them a little bit more professional development from the eSchool Data team down at Bosie's to come and help them with the grade book. And the last item is actually the frontline professional learning is a new system to track, to automate, automate the tracking of the professional development our teachers take and be able to track that and keep it online. Okay? So that actually helps Laura and John for seeing what we're going to, but also for the teachers who are required to do professional development hours with the state for our certificates. It's easier for us, instead of our paper copies that we keep throughout the year, to be able to see online all the professional development hours we've accumulated. That will help us for our certification. And I think that was the last, yeah, that was the last item.
Nancy, I have a question. If I was, say, a time traveler from, say, the middle part of the twentieth century.
Oh, boy. There we go.
What I want to know is, I want to know if there is, what's the evidence that all this technology, all this stuff, all the apps and all the i, iPads and Chromebooks, what's the evidence that they're producing better thinkers, more critical thinkers, and more creative students, more creative people? I mean, what's the evidence for it? I mean, it's, I get that this is where everybody is now. I understand that. And I think you've done a masterful job of presenting what you guys have. But what is the evidence that we're getting more, more critical thinkers, better thinkers, deeper thinkers, and more creative people?
That's a tough question for evidence.
Really?
For evidence. No, because I think what it is, is with the technology, and it promotes that learning environment for the student and it makes them more engaged and it facilitates a different, it helps with differentiation for students who can't make, get a concept one way and that they're able to use a tool to enable to understand a concept. Okay? If, if I have to present evidence, I mean, I think that's a little hard. Now, the teachers use other tools to assess, you know, has it helped them learn a math concept, okay, by using that technology tool? And they use different tools to assess that. But for me to say, I think, evidence that it's, it's doing that, I don't think I can provide that. You know, as I think, again, it helps with differentiation for students that might be able not to be able to understand something, that that tool can help them understand a concept better. I think with the Google Apps for Education, it promotes that itself, promotes a very collaborative environment that I wouldn't, you wouldn't have as easily if you didn't have that in a school because it just sets it up that I have a document I can share. Okay? I have, I have an online interaction with a teacher. I can provide instant feedback for that, for that student by having that environment.
I mean, as, as a time traveler, this is all fascinating and I've never heard this stuff before, but I still, and I'm not against the, I mean, I'm not, Chris, I'm not, I'm not inferring or implying that there isn't evidence, but I do think it's worth, since this has become such a big part of what we're doing at this level of education, that there ought to be evidence that in fact it's making kids more critical, more, more creative, better thinkers. I mean, is there? I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a big investment. I think we should know whether, I understand what the aspirations are. I get that.
I think that sometimes it is situational and to compile, like, I agree that it is a huge investment, but like, it is hard to measure sometimes the motivation or the differentiation that is able to come from these tools. So I know personally that there's a student who was really just refusing to write, like, he just doesn't, doesn't want to write, doesn't, but when you can encourage him to write on paper and then, then we are going to put it on the computer and we're going to, you're going to type it, you're going to get it on there. And then now he is invested in being able to edit it. So now the writing isn't, now he is more creative because now he not just edits, he's revising it. He's willing to go another step higher to, to analyze his work and just make it a better product. And I have also seen kids who, you know, just don't get fractions, but that WoodMath app, they, they get to move these pieces around and they really see how it works. We do have those, you know, all the manipulatives, but to get those out every day and it, it makes it, it makes it more just seamless that you can, you can do some of these kinds of, but I hear what you're saying.
I mean, there, there must be some evidence on this stuff.
You know, I honestly don't think that we're going to see better creativity or better creative thinking because of technology. Because I, I think to say that because of technology, all of a sudden human beings are going to become better creative thinkers or, or, or more creative is not factual. I, that's my belief system. I think that what's happening is that it's incumbent upon a school district to take a look at the ways with which they must be creative and the ways with which they must think critically to prepare themselves for their future. So I think that the ability to be able to be creative with a tangible musical instrument or with physical paint is, is important. However, we know that in, in the world of graphics, the ability to be creative on a computer through video editing software, through the manipulation of music on a computer is another facet of our creativity that they must engage with and explore their own interests so that they could see if that venue for creativity through technologies something that interests them for their own future. Same thing with collaboration. I don't think they're better collaborators or creative thinking, but they must be able to do it in different venues, whether it's through a shared document on Google or whether it is through commenting on each other's YouTube videos. So I don't know if that's, you know, where I would want to spend my energy as much as making sure that the opportunities we're giving them are really good, authentic, and engaging learning experiences that are really opening up their minds to, to their own interests and their own learning and really preparing them for the future.
By the way, I work with a technology consultant. To break this comment, which is, I would be astonished if there was any evidence. I'm with you, John, which is, I would view, technology is a tool. And I think it's a matter of how do the teachers use the tool? And, you know, it's a supportive tool. There was an interesting article a couple of years ago, by the way, about numerous Silicon Valley folks sending their kids to Waldorf schools where there was no tech college. Because they wanted their kids to learn to think, not to learn to access stuff on a computer. So I would encourage us, I frankly never thought this should be a district priority because I think it is a tool, not a priority in and of itself. Not that it's not important, that we use it well, but at the level of, no, I really didn't. And I said so at the time, by the way. It's not, you know, comment on you and your use of it. It's a matter of, this to me is a supportive, enabling thing, not a primary objective to use technology. So I'd be very surprised if there was. I would encourage us to, how do we use it in ways that encourages primary goals, which are kids learning, thinking, et cetera? I'd also encourage, frankly, I'd love to see us actually teaching coding, actually teaching kids to, you know, learn to use technology in the ways that they're going to need to, you know, in future economies, not just as a means of accessing information, which they all do for fifteen hours as soon as they leave school anyway.
I thought we were teaching.
The PTA has an after-school. And it shift from consumers to producers is what you're talking about.
Any other questions for Nancy? Nancy, thank you very much.
There's a lot of ground to cover.
I have to, I'm going to cover facilities.
I have one quick thing. The smart boards. Are, is there any ability for us to give those smart boards away to a district that needs?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Yeah, we haven't thought about that.
I know, I know we have to keep track of all our equipment and stuff and all that, but, you know, there's a lot of districts that are hurting financially and stuff and they might.
We could look into that because we really haven't even started taking them down yet, but that's, that's good things to keep them on.
Maybe we can give it, give them to ourselves and print it off.
Facilities is the last prior.
Let me just say, taxes.
Facilities is always the, you know, the redheaded stepchild of our priorities. In part because, in part because we can, we basically have a sense of what's going on in the building and how that, we're here, we see it, we understand it. So all I would say is, it probably, I guess I would say, let's be efficient in our discussion of facilities.
We are, I'm already there. No problem. I think we could cover this rather quickly. You know, we have two hours, John. Really, the goal, the goal with our facilities is how do we not only develop and maintain, but design, really, really think about how the space with which kids learn affects their learning? And to be really, you know, really explore, you know, how our work with creating space basically enhances student learning. We have done a lot of work to begin exploring this. Last year, we embarked upon a wonderful and well-needed expense, working with teachers to identify new elementary classroom furniture. You probably know, we went with a more innovative design than a simple rectangle that allows for really interesting configurations of space within, within classrooms. We also did a lot of work thinking about where learning happenings within specific areas in the building. We relocated special education and related services so that they were adjacent to each other to infuse communications, efficiencies, collaboration. We were able to relocate music to a place where it really is respectful of the fact that we value ensembles where larger groups of students congregate to make music, so therefore they needed a larger space. We were able to really take a look at an underutilized outdoor space in our native garden courtyard and renovate it so that there is a lot more potential for how it can be used in the future. We assembled a design team. That design team's purpose was to research innovative design, both using the web as a research tool, articles, but also visiting other districts to get an idea of what other districts are doing in terms of the utilization of space and creative, creating innovative learning spaces. We also began to work with TetraCheck, I should say, we continued that work. They worked with the administrative team, the facilities team, and the entire staff to really engage in those preliminary conversations about our capital improvement project. To engage the community in thought around the capital project, there will be some capital project forums, which will be open invitations where our, our current team along with TetraCheck will sort of engage the community on where we are in the process, and begin the process of not only gaining input, but gaining interest in select people from the community being part of the project task force, which will then be a consolidated effort of a lot of different constituency, constituencies to really firm up the proposal for the capital plan that will be finalized with TetraCheck and be brought to the board and the legislature is asked.
Cool.
Well done.
Question?
Is that who you're talking about? We're talking about.
Here's the real, we are, we are, we are approaching a capital improvement project. It is, we're not talking about building, a new building, we're not putting on new wings or anything else. We're taking what is essentially at best a twentieth-century facility and upgrading it to the point where it can, it can and should provide the environment the kids need. I think it's a great idea to get as much community input on that question as you can, but I think in the way that the questions are framed, I'm not sure that beyond parents is over, you're going to get a lot of, you're going to get a lot of interest in this. That doesn't say you shouldn't put the invitation out there and you may get that input, but we're talking about a very straightforward proposition. Okay. Are there no other questions for John? Laura, John, presenters?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. There was a lot of work. It was, it was what we asked for, which was.
Do they have a director hire situation going on right?
Director, sir.
That's a question for Laura. I think the answer is yes.
Facilities director, sir.
Yes, she said, we've got a list from the state of director of facilities. So I just sent out an invitation just to see if anybody's interested and I'll use those names. If there's specific civil service.
Right, right, right. Gotcha. Just wanted to know we're progressing.
Yeah.
The agenda lists both principals and superintendents' remarks. Laura and I discussed this with John earlier, but the reality is, there's nothing, nothing to report that has not been reported as recently as our most recent Friday memo. So given the lateness of the hour and the amount of work that still remains to be done on the agenda, we are going to say that we will have had our superintendent and principals' reports by virtue of the fact that we've all seen our last Friday memo. Are there any questions on any of that? You can ask it now or at any other point if you want, but superintendents' and principals' remarks are effectively covered. That's not the same for Sue.
Nice try, Sue.
Money to discuss. So if the treasurer would like to, the treasurer's report?
Yep.
That would be, you have to prove that.
Yes. So the first page you have is a multi-fund account, which we start out month with five hundred twenty-one thousand and six, two hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. You'll see there's a big transfer of money there, two million nine hundred and five thousand. That's really actually just moving funds from the general fund to the trust and agency account. It's due to payroll. It's not actually moving funds because it's all in one bank account, but it's an internal accounting type of thing, just in case anybody was wondering about that. Anyway, we did have our basic normal activity of paying our employees and paying checks. And we ended up the month with six hundred five, six hundred fifty-seven thousand four, seven forty-four, forty-nine. And in the investment accounts, we started out with seven million eight eighty-two, one forty-five, point forty-five. We transferred over five hundred and fifty thousand, had some minor interest payments of four seventy-eight, seventeen, and ended up the month with seven million three hundred thirty-two thousand six twenty-three sixty-two. I'll take the treasurer's report.
Questions for Sue? So this is all the Board of Education, here, it's in Union Preschool District, accepts the treasurer's report for April 2017 as presented. I need a second. All those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays. Thank you, Sue. Budget status, revenue status, warrant reports, and we have to approve that budget transfer as well.
All of the budget status are in these files and warrant reports are pretty much business as usual. I won't get into detail on that. The budget transfer is a large one this time, hundred, six thousand one hundred dollars. This is typical at the end of the year when we're finalizing budget, basically looking at all the negative lines. We're doing a lot of purchasing in the month of June. It's not just including what, what is on the warrant, not the warrant report, sorry, the budget status report, but it's also anticipated. This is typical at the end of the year when we're finalizing budget, basically looking at all the negative lines. We're doing a lot of purchasing in the month of June. It's not just including what, what is on the warrant, not the warrant report, sorry, the budget status report, but it's also anticipating expenditures through the end of the month. So, the main, you know, I guess the main reason why I'm doing it is we have some bosie's expenses that are higher than I expected. There's a...
Do I do it with tuition or something?
Well, we're transferring the money from tuition to pay for these things. And that's, I anticipated that the tuition amounts would be a little bit higher. Now, I'm looking at them, our high school students, I thought would have some higher special ed costs are going to be a little lower, so I feel confident that we can transfer that amount from tuition where we can cover these other expenses that we're anticipating for the rest of the year.
Questions for Sue on the budget transfer? If not, the resolution of the board of education, the Garrison Union Free School District approves budget transfer number eight, an amount of $106,100. I need a so moved.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays. Wonderful. Thank you, Sue. I'll do this from the paper then. Consent agenda's got, actually not. Oh, yeah. All the way through, oh, goodness. F through O. Why don't we number these instead of lettering them? I do not understand that, but anyway. Yeah, we go all the way to Q, so I'm going to go through these very quickly. Resolve the board of education and Garrison Union Free School District approves the consent agenda items B through Q as presented versus accept the minutes of the May 3, May 16 board meeting. Second is to approve CSE recommendations, those are in your package. D is approve a pay differential, if there are questions about that, Laura will answer in a minute, but it's approve a higher rate pay differential for Melissa Harris, teacher A, for her assignment as principal secretary slash senior type, this effective May 31, 2017, as per the contractual agreement between the Garrison Union Free School District and the Garrison School related personnel, effective July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018. Fourth item is approve maximum of 20 additional hours for Jennifer Mueller, the CSE chairperson, at a regular hourly pay rate during the 2016-17 school year. At the moment, we're going to appoint a videographer. Smattering of polite applause. Approve the appointment of Richard Redman as videographer for recording board of education meetings at the rate of $215 per meeting plus an additional fee of $50 for any portion of a meeting over two hours. Running up to three hours. You're going to get well tonight.
Keep talking.
Running up to three hours and 25 for each addition, $25 for each additional half hour and $50 for the online posting of meeting videos for the 2017-18 school year. Item six, I believe, approve the appointment of Michael Cullen as a substitute videographer for recording board, board of education meetings at the rate of $215 per meeting plus an additional $50 for any portion of meeting over two hours, running up to three hours, and $25 for each additional half hour for 2017 school year, same as Richard is. All right, approve summer, approve the 2017 summer work for a maximum of eight days for Nancy Romano, technology specialist, at her regular daily pay rate. Item next, approve the 2017 summer work for a maximum of three days for Jennifer Mueller, CSE chairperson at a regular daily rate of pay. Approve Pat Martz to provide business and CSE office support from July 1 through August 31 of 2017 at her regular hourly rate of pay. Approve Catherine Clark to provide summer school bus monitoring clerical office support from July 3 through August 11, 2017 at her regular hourly rate. Approve the appointment of Gladys Cuvee as a voting machine inspector representing Platteville County for work at the, at the May 16, 2017 budget vote and election at the rate of $250. Approve the sports merger, mergers for modified baseball, softball, boys' lacrosse, football, girls' soccer, boys' soccer, and girls' volleyball with Howland Central School District and a modified, and modified wrestling with Howland Central School District and Platteville Valley Central School District for the 2017-18 school year. All those agreements are in your package and are attached. Approve the services agreement reinstatement with the Omni Group for the academic year 2017 slash 18 at an annual rate of $3,600. You can talk about what that is momentarily, and the agreement is in your package. Approve agreement for the stack services with mandatory advisory group special services, Inc., effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, an amount of $2,936. That agreement is also attached. Item next to last, approve the consultant agreement for Medicaid services with management advisory group business operations, effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, an amount of $900. And item last, approve, adopt the revised 2017 slash 2018 school calendar. I need a so moved.
So moved.
We will get to that in one, as soon as I have a second, then we get all the questions you want. Laura, I need a second.
We're going to have her before I ask the question.
You're not going to vote?
We second.
We second. You get a so moved, you get a second, then you get to ask Laura anything you want.
Okay, it's about the calendar. So, does this calendar reflect the conversation that we had earlier about the new state requirements? So, we have, if you were partial to these?
Correct. Yep, we're in full compliance.
Way to comply.
Excellent. Other questions on any of that? Laura, you want to, who is the Omni? Just remind us who these people are.
Sue was prepared to talk about Omni stack and Medicaid services.
Thank you, just briefly to remind me.
Our Omni is basically the service that we use for voluntary or free contributions. Our employees can contribute to, like a TSA. They take the funds and put it into the direct account and make sure that we're doing everything all week.
So, that's...
That's what, that's what we pay them for. And as far as the Mad group, management advisory group, we employ them to use to do our stacking, which is basically taking our special education students' expenses and putting them through a system that helps us get reimbursed through the state and Medicaid as well. We're going to, we have a few students that are Medicaid eligible, we haven't had in years, so they're going to, we're going to start picking that up this year again.
One question about, I see the bus thing in here, and so I'm thinking about the director of facilities position. We have a, the director of facilities position is also the transportation coordinator. I don't know what the timeline is for the hire, who are a new director of facilities, but are we still folding the transportation coordinator in, or do we, how are we doing this?
We're doing facilities and transportation.
And we expect this person to be here?
As soon as we, as soon as we can.
The goal is to start the next school year.
The end of August is when Dick leaves.
Oh, okay.
So, we have the summer.
Dick will be around this summer.
But we would love to have somebody early so that they can kind of live in the building for a while and really be mentored to them, coached by Dick.
That's what I was... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No extensions, no nays. Excellent.
Discussion.
Anyone just come find it. Discussion items. Committee, review of committee minutes, the audit and finance committee and the technology committees both met, the minutes are in your package, you've got a chance. Audit and finance presented, audit and finance presented to the board after, am I recalling this correctly? The auditors who visited with the audit committee, then presented to the board or did not, they concluded with a discussion.
No, they did not come...
They did not come before the full...
No, not actually.
All right, so just...
That was months ago.
Right, they all tend to run the hour or something. So, the auditors, the auditors came and discussed preparations for their next audit and reviewed with the audit committee what they're going to be, what they're going to be looking at, which is essentially what they always look at, in preparation for their audit report.
They were actually doing this week.
Oh, all right, so they're, they're underway. And the technology committee, I don't know that there's anything more to be said about technology that hasn't been said or written tonight, so let's move past that. Action items, we'd approve the annual update of the strategic construction and technology plan. Laura, why don't you describe what that is before we read the resolution?
That's the, it's a three-year plan of, of how we acquire and use technology. It's a very strategic plan. The only addition to this one is the this year's budget, the monies that we used.
So, every, we're required every three years to submit a plan to the state. Anytime we make a modification of that plan annually, you're supposed to submit an update. The update this year is to fill in the amount of money we're spending this year on, for the coming year on technology, correct? Or was it last year? In any case, the only change in the plan is the, is the insertion of the amount that's to be spent. So...
2017.
17, 18, okay. So, in that case, resolve that the board of education of the Garrison Union Free School District approves the annual update of the strategic construction and technology plan for 2015, 2015-18, that's a three-year...
So moved.
Anybody give me a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No extensions, no nays. Proposal to install garage water service. There's no water out there, huh? Is that the idea that we're going to get, we're going to get plumbing out to the garage?
I think we only have plumbing out there?
No, I don't think so.
Laura, no, I didn't think, I don't think there's, so they're going to run water out to the, out to the garage?
There's water out there. I think once we're able to wash down the arcades and stuff, and also the barns up there.
All right, okay. So, resolve that, I don't know if there's much to discuss here. Resolve that the board of education, Garrison Union Free School District accepts the proposal from CF Capus Pumps and Plumbing to install a new water service to the district's garage at a cost of $7,150.
So moved.
Give me a second. Anyway, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no nays. We're going to have some masonry work done. Want to describe what we're going to have done?
Two of this project is, there's the cap on the wall outside on 90, it's crumbling, so it needs to be replaced. And then there's a strange planter, brick planter outside in the back that I believe he wants to remove or lower.
I think he wanted to lower it, didn't he?
Lower it so that...
Who's Dick?
Oh, Dick, sorry.
So, okay, so we're, we're working on the wall out front, and we're modifying the planter in the back at a cost of $18,800.
So moved.
Let me read the resolution. Resolve the board of education, Garrison Union Free School District accepts the proposal of college Duke Masonry for masonry work on district property at a cost of $18,800.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Did we, did that one have to go off a bid presumably? At $18,800, it presumably did, right?
Over $20,000.
Is it, well, what's the, what's the cut-off number is all I'm asking?
The cut-off is $20,000.
Oh, so we didn't have...
I think Dick did get...
Did he get a...
He got some, I don't know if he went out, but it was difficult, I can't remember.
Okay, did he get a...
He got, he got, yeah, re-quotes.
This is the best you can argue.
Yes.
This is one that comes up every year, it's one of my favorites. Resolve the board of education, Garrison Union Free School District approves the following printer maintenance agreements with Connecticut Business Systems LLC effective July 17 through June 20, 2020. Oh, maybe we won't have to do this for another three years. Maintenance agreement at a cost of $157 a month and equipment acquisition agreement for one Xerox C405 copier at no cost to the district.
So moved.
This is actually something new.
This one's new, yeah, I, yeah.
I so moved it.
That's, somebody give me a second, I'll let Sue finish. Sue, finish your second question.
Very briefly, I've had a company come in for years saying that they could save us money with our toners and printer cartridges. They're trying to get oil from Platteville County, so we did get a bit of a deal, not much, we're saving a little bit of money on our overall cost of printer and toner. So, they're going to be monitoring our printers throughout the building and automatically sending printer and toner to us, and then fix our machines as needed, so.
Can I just ask, are they, the inks belong to that machine? Like, is it a Xerox ink or a Canon ink?
Whatever it is. And it's the one equipment that they're giving us, they have a printer copier in the business office, they couldn't provide that ink? So, we have all different kinds throughout the building.
But I thought sometimes if you put the other ink in it, it can label orange.
Well, we won't be putting ink in, they will now. We have, and if it breaks, they're fixing it, so.
I just asked.
I think we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no nays. Receiving high schools, as we do every year. Resolve the board of education, Garrison Union Free School District pursuant to the regulations of the Commission of Education and education law hereby designates Howland High School in the Howland Central School District and James I. O'Neill High School in the Highland Falls Fort Montgomery Central School District as the receiving high schools for the education of pupils in grades nine through 12 residing in the Garrison Union Free School District for the 2017/18 school year.
So moved.
Check it.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have approved the high school instructional contract with Howland. Oh, what is this? Oh, Laura, now will I read the resolution?
You have to, you have to do it.
Oh, right, okay. Resolve the board of education, Garrison, hereby approves the, oh, I see, right, okay. Approves the contract with Howland Central School District for the instructional services for the education secondary students for the 2017-18 school year at a tuition rate of $13,233 for the regular, for regular education.
So moved.
A second, anybody? Is that up or down? Is that flat up or down from last year?
It's up slightly.
That's up, so it goes up by the CPI, right?
It's, I think it's less than $20,000.
Right. Got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no nays. We're getting there, folks. This is now O'Neill. Resolve the board of education, Garrison Union Free School District hereby approves the contract with the Highland Falls Fort Montgomery Central School District for instructional services for the 2017-18 school year. According to the stipulation of settlement dated 8/17/05, the last actual tuition rate for the 2015-16 school year was $13,094 per student.
So moved.
Give me a second, anyone?
Second.
Do we, this is...
That's what we pay now.
But that's subject to adjustment.
Yes, always subject to adjustment when the new grade comes out.
When the new, when the new...
Start of January.
Sorry. Yeah, no, I know, I'm just looking for the acronym. The, was it, not, NRT, thank you.
Non-resident.
No, no, it's in tuition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No extensions, no nays. Appropriation of reserves, Sue, you're going to, you'll take us through this one. Resolve the board of education, Garrison Union Free School District hereby authorizes the appropriation of reserves as follows. $127,812 from the retirement system contributions reserve fund, $252,900 from the debt service fund, and $21,525 from the designation of other post-employment benefits for the 2016-17 general fund, I'm sorry, in the 2016-17 general fund to be used as revenue towards the 2016-17 budget.
So moved.
Give me a second, I need a second. Sue, go ahead. Just explain what we already know.
What this resolution does, this is something that was budgeted for in this current budget year that we're living in. And so, basically, what the board is doing, saying is that we can use our reserve funds to help cover the cost that we said we would in the revenue side of our budget.
When we prepare the 16-17 school budget, which was approved in May of 2015, right? Yes.
16.
16, right, right.
Yes, yes.
Right. Okay, so this, we're formally now authorizing the actual transfer of those funds.
Yes, and then the next one basically authorizes us to use any leftover funds to refund reserves and/or the capital reserve fund, which is something that I put in.
Okay, so I read the resolution. Did I have a so moved in a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no nays. All right, so, the next one, almost last. Resolve the board of education, Garrison Union Free School District hereby authorizes the funding of the district's approved reserves and the capital reserve fund with the excess of 4% from unappropriate fund, from unappropriated fund balance at June 30, 2017, after the designated amount for tax reduction has been set. The allocation of such excess fund balance shall, will be determined subsequent to June 30, 2017, and prior to the setting of the next tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
So, Sue, explain what we're doing here. We're now authorizing anything...
Yeah, basically, what we're advertising here is if there is any money left over in this year's budget, we can refund not only the reserves, but the capital fund as well this year.
All those in favor?
Just one question, does this, this doesn't affect the fact that we have up to 4%? We can have unallocated reserves of up to 4%.
Yes. Yes.
These are allocated reserves that we will fund as possible.
Yes.
Aye. Thank you. Aye, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No extensions, no nays. Summer, oh, summer board meeting dates. Have we, these are proposed, or do we all say these words for us? Well, let's see. Resolve the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District hereby approves the following summer 2017 Board of Education meeting dates, the reorg meeting on July 12, and a pre-opening meeting on August 30, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Suffice to say that those of us who can be there will be there. I think we did look at the date for the reorg meeting anyway.
12, I can't do.
As long as we have a forum, we'll make best efforts to be there and have a forum.
Skype in, dude.
We don't have a...
Yeah, we can Skype in, right?
We don't have a forum that gets us...
What kind of 21st century crazy decision?
As long as you can just...
You can suggest a teleconference.
You can Skype in as long as you're doing it in a public place and we announce what that place is, so.
Send you the doorbell.
If it's a cottage on that...
I can FaceTime.
Marietta, Chicago.
It's a Marietta, Chicago. Well, did I have a, did I have a second?
I stumbled.
All those in favor? Aye. No extensions, no nays. And we come now. Public comment.
Woo!
At least amen, a very patient member of the public.
Must have some comment after all this patient.
Oh, no, I just came, Joseph wanted a representative here ongoing for your board meetings to see how we can best contribute and support the district priorities and what you were doing. So, I will be at all your board meetings going forward.
I'll do good.
I have no comment beyond that, but thank you very much for your service, and it's been very interesting.
Well, they're not all, this is...
And this is Sarah Tormack.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm Sarah.
Sarah, welcome. In that case, a board member comment.
Well, I think it's, I think this is the time to let Courtney know that in executive session, last time, we agreed that all meetings will be at least four hours.
That's right.
Good times, they can't.
We know it's not tonight.
Exactly, once the votes were counted.